... closed meeting order, everybody please stand.
... to the United States of America and to the Republic through righteous hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to ask you all to please remain standing for a moment of silence for the holiday that we had yesterday for everyone that has protected us and given us peace throughout the years, so if we could please have a moment of silence. Now I have one more favor, I would like to ask everybody that has been in the armed services to please remain standing and the rest of us will sit down.
Adoption of agenda for regular meeting, under provisions of the Public Meetings Law of the State of Missouri, the Board must adopt by roll call vote an agenda that includes a time, date, place, and tentative agenda for the meeting. A copy of the notice and agenda for this meeting was posted on Monday, November 10th, 2014, at the Administration Center, 1005 Waterford Drive, Florissant, Missouri. At the same time, copies of the notice and agenda were mailed to major radio and television stations, to four newspapers, to all municipalities, schools in the district, and posted on the district website. Do I have a motion-
Mr. President, I would like to amend the agenda, please, to include McCorse South Berkeley and Ferguson Middle School students placing in the Iota Phi Lambda National Essay Contest, and we would do that after Agenda Item Number Six.
So a motion's been made to modify the agenda to "After Agenda Item Six"?
About Four.
The Four, so after Five, okay.
Mr. Reiver?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Schrader?
Aye.
Dr. Thurman?
Aye.
Secretary Woodson?
Aye.
Ms. Austin?
Aye.
And Mr. Schrader?
Aye.
Adoption of agenda for closed meeting. Oh yes, I'm sorry, thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda for the public regular meeting?
Don't move.
It's been moved and seconded. Morris.
Mr. Reiver?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Schrader?
Aye.
Dr. Thurman?
Aye.
Secretary Woodson?
Aye.
Ms. Austin?
Aye.
Aye. Now, the adoption of agenda for closed meeting. Section 610.021 of Missouri law provides for a discussion of certain agenda items in a closed meeting. Notice of proposed closed meeting including the agenda items you can discuss was posted. The Board by roll call vote must authorize holding the closed meeting and approve the proposed agenda by reference to each subject to be discussed. The agenda for the closed meeting is legal, Section 610.021.1. Personnel, Section 610.021.3.
I move we adopt agenda for the closed meeting.
Motion's been made and seconded.
Mr. Reiver?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Schrader?
Aye.
Dr. Thurman?
Aye.
Secretary Woodson?
Aye.
Ms. Austin?
Aye.
And Ms. Reddick?
Aye. Thank you. Before we move into the recognitions, some of you might have seen a card that's on the table now. If you wish to speak for the Board, we ask that you complete the card and we'll have them turned in. Mr. LaRue will discuss the reason behind the card at his section.
What page is that on?
Right behind you, the signing sheet.
Jenny, could you help pass it now, maybe?
All right, Christine Reese awarded the Emerson Excellence in Teaching Honor as Dr. Bland or who will be, who did it, Dr. Bland?
Hi, Jan, it's oldest, and actually Chris Reese is one minute away from going to be very real. Good evening to the Board of Education.
There she is, come on over, Chris Reese. So good evening to the Board of Education, President Chabot, Dr. LaRue, and Mrs. Riel. I have the honor of recognizing Chris Reese as she walks forward. Chris Reese is Ferguson Florence Elementary Science Instructional Coach, and she was selected as one of this year's Emerson Excellence in Teaching Award recipient for outstanding contributions in education. The Emerson Excellence in Teaching Awards are given annually to area teachers who demonstrate dedication to students through excellence in education. Ms. Reese will receive her award at a ceremony on November 16th. And I've had the honor of working with Ms. Reese for the last eight years as an outstanding fifth grade teacher, also at Combs Elementary School before accepting the Science Instructional Coach position, so congratulations to Christine Reese.
Agenda item number five, the Ferguson Florissant educators receive the Apple for the Teacher Award, Victoria Ralph, Nicole Weitzel, and Steve Lauer, please come forward to do your presentation. Would Shariis Baker come forward and Shondell Woods and Ms. Betty Fagan? Just give them a second to get up here. Three educators in the Ferguson Florissant School District were selected by the Iota Phi Lambda Sorority Alpha Zeta Chapter to receive the annual Apple for the Teacher Award. The honor is given to educators who demonstrate excellence and who make a difference in the lives of students and in the community. This year's awardees are Ms. Shariis Baker Ingram, mathematics teacher at McCorse South Berkeley High School, Ms. Betty Fagan- Ms. Betty Fagan, retired principal of McCorse South Berkeley High School, and early education teacher, Ms. Shondell Woods. And if any of the recipients have family here today in the audience, feel free to stand as well. And Dr. Graham is, and who's with you? Linda Logan is with you there, both on the Board of Directors and the President of the sorority that gives out the awards, so they're going to add a few words as well and hand out.
Hello to our excellent Board and to all of our patrons and family members. I am the Regional Director of Iota Phi Lambda Sorority, and I am so proud that Ferguson Florissant for years has been a participant in our national program called the Apple for the Teacher Award. I would like to present to you the President of the Alpha Zeta Chapter, Ms. Linda Logan. If you would give her a hand, please. Green and white, and she's not feeling the best, but she did come out because this is so important, and we want to take pictures with our honorees, and would you like to have something to say? Congratulations and the very best to you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
At this time, we have the presentation for the McCorse South Berkeley and Ferguson Middle School students placed in the Iota Phi Lambda National Essay Contest. Mr. Lauer.
Good evening. Five Ferguson Florissant School District students will be honored in the Iota Phi Lambda Sorority Alpha Zeta Chapter Annual's Apple for the Teacher Awards Luncheon. The students all placed in the sorority's annual National Essay Contest in their respective divisions. In the Middle School Division, three Ferguson Middle School eighth grade students received awards, so if the students are here, if they could please come forward. Nicholas Armstead took third place. His parents are welcome to come up with him. He received a $50 prize. Rashara Johnson took second place and received a $75 prize. And Jasmine Whitcox took first place and received a $100, $100 prize. In the High School Division, two McCorse South Berkeley students received awards. Junior Andrew Keys took third place and received a $50 prize. And Jared Williams took second place and received a $75 prize.
I'm asking the National, I'm our president to come up because these pictures go into our National Book. She said go and take the picture and we will just email it to you. Thank you.
At this time, if Ms. Jane Corlory, Principal of McCorr High School, would please come forward and present the National Achievement Scholarship Program Award.
Good evening, everyone. It is my pleasure with great comet pride to announce Anitra Adams. Anitra, please come forward, and Mom and Dad, Mr. and Mrs. Adams, please come forward with her. McCorr High School student Anitra Adams was recently named Outstanding Participant in the National Achievement Scholarship Program. Ms. Adams scored in the top 3% of 160,000 African-American students. Anitra told me today in her, in my office, that her biggest inspiration and support are her parents, and that's what's caused her to be successful.
If Laura Medrusi and Steve Lauer would please come forward for the McCorse South Berkeley Students Top Take Top Fries and Cooking Competition.
I don't think they brought samples. If I could have our students and Ms. Brown step forward, please? On, in this speech, I'm sorry. On October 22nd, students from cooking classes in each Ferguson Florissant High School came together to compete in a cooking competition inspired by popular Food Network TV show where chefs create dishes based on a mandatory ingredient. The teams from McCorr, McCorr North, and McCorr South Berkeley High School had one hour to create a dish incorporating sweet potatoes grown at Earth Dance Farms in Ferguson. Each team presented their recipes to a panel of four judges that included Laura Medrusik, the CFO of Ferguson Florissant School District, Michael LaPage, an instructor at LaCour d'Enble, Cortez Thomas, a graduate of McCorr High School and current pastry chef at Kathy's Kitchen in Ferguson, and district chef Tony Dodson. The McCorse South Berkeley High School team of Michael Miller, Arianna Porter, Brittany Taylor, and Najene Davis won the competition with their roasted sweet potato and spicy black bean tacos. And they didn't bring any home to their taco. Team members were awarded cookbook, cookbook, cookbooks and a trophy, and, do they know yet?
Yes, they have.
Okay, they're also going to get cool chef jackets and caps, or just jackets?
Jacket.
Jackets.
Personals.
All right, personalized jackets.
I was one of the judges in the competition, and I was very proud of the students at McCorse South Berkeley because they don't actually have a fax class, and so they have to come after school on their own time to create, and they created these dishes, and it was absolutely, and all of the kids at all the schools did a great job, they were all very delicious, and I was especially proud of these students because they took the time to come after class, after school, and do these, and I was just really proud of all the kids, but I was so glad that they won, so, and it was really delicious, so.
This portion of the meeting is allocated for the Board to provide an update of current activities and events of the district that may be of special interest to Board members and the community. Mr. Reiver?
Well, it's been a busy month, definitely, everybody back in swing of things here, lots of meetings, lots of budget meetings, that's the responsibility I have on the Strategic Task Force, and we're going to put forth in April a known tax bond issue to better, shall we say, support the district finances going forward, so that's going to be very important to keep everything, hopefully, I want to say, continuing in the district. I don't know how many people saw the other night, I guess it was last night, Elliot Davis talking to our Board President, Rob Chabot, and Jake Zimmerman about North County districts and their finances, but with property values going down and things like that, he portrayed as a very bleak outlook, so we're trying to do everything here to stem that, and working diligently with the financing, finances at every angle and everything that we can do. On the, on the bright side, our wonderful CFO Laura Medrusik found money for the Scholar Bowl to bring that back, so we've been having a lot of fun with this, which is very exciting in our schools, so I was happy to hear that. I've attended tons of parent-teacher conferences and been in and out of the schools, got to do a pumpkin judging contest over at Duchaine Elementary, and I also, while I was doing that, I got to witness Toni Burrows, is she here tonight? Okay, her group with the robotics over there, that was, man, that was awesome. Everybody, I encouraged them to see that, watching her work with those kids and the robots, that was, that was a highlight, highlight, definitely. And then I kind of have a funny story, I was, I'm on the SSD Governance Council for the district, represent Rob Chabot, and I do that function. I went to the, every year they have a social, so, all those events are kind of really a lot of fun because, kind of off the record, but it's kind of like they always say, all the business deals are made on the golf courses, well, this is kind of one of those type of deals. So, I'm sitting there bragging on our district and all the great things SSD has done in our district, and they're doing, and the plans that Vicki McNamara and Gwen Diggs and everybody else has been doing with SSD, and then brought to a personal level of how this district has really, really helped my special needs son, and, you know, going on and on, you know, I tend to ramble, and I'm talking to this guy, okay? And when I'm done, I say, "Well, now, what do you do for SSD?" He goes, "Well, that's what makes, you know, that's really makes these stories really, really hit home, you don't know who I am?" I said, "No," and I, you know, "Who are you?" He goes, "Well, I'm the new superintendent of SSD." You know, Tom Boyen, and well, I, I knew, you know, I'd seen all the emails, but I'd never seen his face or anything, so, so that was, that was, as I always say, one of those interesting moments in life, right? So, anyway, that's all I have right now.
Mr. Brown?
Well, good evening. I've been on the stakeholder and community engagement aspect of what we're all doing together on the Board with our strategic goals, and as far as the superintendent search is coming along, we recently met with Pro Act Search, and they are, of course, the search committee looking for a superintendent, and we met in regards to the community forums that have been held, and they're taking their input that they receive in these forums and using it as a recruiting profile for the next superintendent as they look for them, and it is the Board's delight to have our community's concerns to be considered in this search, and it's coming along, and I think that pretty soon we will be hearing more about that, I'm sure that Leslie at some point in time will have something to say about that. There you go, that's without even asking. All right, and then also in regards to what we call the Parent Portal, we had 1,900 parents, they have accessed it, and they're obtaining information on their children's grades as well as attendance, which is a good method of keeping our parents informed, and perhaps for some of those students, not such a good method for letting them get caught not doing what they should be doing, but that is coming along and it is a success. Our newly formed foundation, that's the, which is the foundation's purpose, is of course to raise support for district programs, we're receiving good press, and that is going to be helpful, and we're very delighted to have that. KMOV TV aired a feature story on the foundation and its purpose, and this took place on October 30th. On October 14th, the foundation will be featured in the St. Louis Business Journal, and of course, that is very instrumental, and I think, believe it's called the Giving Guide Magazine, so we're encouraged with that, and that could be very helpful for us, and I'm delighted that Laura and Jan have worked so hard on that, and it's going to come along very wonderfully for us, and so we're encouraged and excited about that. On October 23rd, we held our first clergy breakfast, and it was attended by 42 pastors and people of faith that came to that. Dr. Glenn Diggs spoke, and she did a terrific job explaining to the, those that were there, we're going to partner with them as best that we can and move along together in terms of encouragement to the parents and the children, say, for attendance purposes, and also, you know, working out perhaps days where the churches will have a homework day or something like that, where they have a tutor to help, so we really need to engage that community because that community has such a tremendous impact on not only our parents, but our students, and so that is indeed a very important aspect of moving along and trying to improve the district, and we're going to do that. We are also visible in the community in, in terms of promoting awareness for the schools, and on October 15th, this coming Saturday, 100 of our, 100-plus of our students will dance and perform at Keener's Plaza as part of the National Public Television Documentary in terms of The Dream at 50, which is a documentary that will celebrate the 50th anniversary of, of course, Martin Luther King's tremendous "I Have a Dream" speech, and so I'm sure that they're excited about it, that we're all excited about it, and we'll, I believe that's going to be aired sometime in February, I'm not sure when, you know offhand?
It is the month of February on PBS.
It is sometime in February, okay, very well. Well, that's, we've been busy, and we're moving along in terms of incorporating our shareholders into our decision-making.
Mr. Schrader? I was fortunate to attend the Little Creek Homecoming. As most of you know, I have a very warm spot in my heart for Little Creek, even though I'm a mathematics teacher. It's really a great day, the weather was perfect, they had a great turnout, and it was really neat to see the red-tailed hawk that had been rehabilitated released to the wild. It's a pretty amazing place, I try to sell this as much as I can, there's only three in the country that exist like it, where school districts have that much property, and it's such a unique asset to our school district. I also attended the Strategic Planning Committee meeting, Dr. McMillan made a great presentation on his vision for how we can improve our schools through our hiring practices, and I have to give a hats off to Dr. McMillan, I've been on the Board, this is my ninth year, and he's the first HR person we've had that's talked about this vision of by hiring, we can really improve our schools, not just fill the classroom, and hats off to Dr. McMillan for that. Which leads into what Dr. Diggs has been doing, she's been a busy lady, it's been alluded to by Keith somewhat, but I'd like to also reiterate her working with the local churches, getting the community, which is parents and everyone involved, in building a culture of expectation and hope for our kids. I think I spent, I've been in public education since 1968, and I think in that time, in some ways, public schools said, you know, "We don't need you, we'll take care of it all by ourselves," and that really doesn't work, we've come around with that thinking, we understand that now, and so getting everyone involved with, this is what school is about for all of our kids, not just some of our kids, doing well is the expectation for everyone that comes from family, comes from church, comes from community, and comes from the schools. And if we can get all four of those legs built on this one table, I think we can really make the turnaround that we need to see in this coming year. So I know Dr. Diggs has been working on many, many things, other than that, I wanted to highlight her work with the local churches.
Good evening, everyone. Hopefully you're warm now. As the Board, my Board partners have already talked about, many things that I, I won't, I won't go over some of the things that they've already talked about, but I do want to say, talk about the clergy breakfast. This was my first opportunity to be a part of that, and it was very impressive to see how many people in our community are wanting to come out and to support the schools, and they're asking to do whatever it is that we need for them to do. It was very, it was a great opportunity for me to sit and talk to some of the ministers in the, in the community that I haven't had an opportunity to meet, and for them to just say, "What do you need?" That's such a warm feeling to have as a Board member, to know that there are people out there who are asking to come in and to help the school, so I just kind of want to say pretty much the same thing that Paul said, they're, they're out there, they're wanting to help, and we need the support of our community leaders. These are our community leaders, and so I enjoyed having the breakfast, hopefully we'll have more, and I also asked Dr. Diggs to be a part of that, that group, to work with ministers and pastors and the- and pastors in the, in the district. Also, I wanted to say a little bit about Pro Act, the team that's helping us to find our new superintendent. I was really impressed, they were really impressed by the support that they got and the number of people who responded to the surveys. That speaks well of our community as well. Thank you so much for your support in filling out the information. We are asking, we want the community to be involved in selecting our next superintendent. It is extremely important that when things go out on social media, that you respond and that you come to the meetings and be a part of the forums because we want your feedback and we are not just using the words and saying the words. We're trying to do things to get people involved so that you come out and tell us what it is that you would like to see in a new superintendent in the district. So thank you again for your support and again, they were very impressed by the numbers of the surveys that came in. Also wanted to share that I'm a part of the school climate group and we're going to be meeting next week, Dr. Bland and I will be meeting with our TILT group. Very important, in order to have an environment of learning, you have to have discipline. You have to have a wonderful school climate in order for children to have a, an environment that's conducive to learning. This is a huge part of what we have to do as educators and as the board in the district, is to make sure that we have climates in our schools, every one of our schools, not just in our schools, but in our administration buildings, just an environment of care, love and also knowing, letting our students know how important it is to get a good education. Not just for them, but for our community. We hope, hopefully, the education that they get, they will use it in our community and they'll come back to our community and give back to our community. So school climate, extremely important. One other thing, really, really funny, the cooking competition. I was supposed to be a judge in the cooking competition and I backed out. So I just wanted to apologize for backing out. But the reason I backed out is I cannot stand sweet potatoes. I can't stand them. I can't stand the smell of them, I can't stand the taste of them. And so when I was asked to be a part of it, I said, oh, I can't wait. And then they sent the paper saying, sweet potatoes. So just wanted to say, thank you for the invite and maybe next year, I'd have a pit table. Anyway, thank you so much and I appreciate your support.
I wish I had known about the cooking contest, but I love sweet potatoes. I make twice-baked sweet potatoes, I make grilled sweet potatoes, I make mashed sweet potatoes. So sweet potatoes are one of my favorite foods. Anyhow, again, sitting in the middle of the table, I don't get to say a lot because it's already been said, but I did attend Little Creek Homecoming and really enjoyed that. It was a beautiful Saturday afternoon to go out and be with nature and walk through the woods and I hope everybody here gets a chance to do that when they can. I believe it's open all day long, isn't it? Little Creek? What's that? Yeah, it's open all day. So if you get a chance, stop by and just take a look at what a treasure we have in the district. The clergy breakfast that we all attended, or most of us attended, again, was a great opportunity to meet with people from the community, to get their support, to have them ask what they can do. Table, I was saying, had some great ideas about how they could help the kids after school and on days we have short days, to have activities for them, a place for them to go, a place to help them and to help them learn. Jana and Kevin Hampton also did a great job at that particular event along with Dr. Diggs. This past Saturday, I attended the pack bear breakfast at First Presbyterian Church in Ferguson. Again, another great event, had lots of lovely people there and it's really nice to have that warm feeling of community that the clergy bring to, to us. And with the events going on in the district, it was a great concern and there's a lot of care and loving that goes on at that meeting and it's really great to see. Appreciate being part of that. And lastly, I'm on the Facilities Committee for the, excuse me, Strategic Plan. And again, in April, we're going to bring up a bond issue. Many of the items that we're looking at are nice, they're going to improve our schools, but also they're going to improve our bottom line, their energy saving, they're a way to give us, reduce our department footprint, to reduce what we, how we operate cost-wise and will be of great, great help to the district long-term. It's not just a short-term kind of thing. So next month, hopefully we'll have a lot more detail we can share and we'll go from there. Thank you very much.
Okay. I need the microphone. Okay, I'm on the talent portion of the strategic plan and six RFPs were sent back in, were sent out, I'm sorry, for proposals and bids for a talent screener. Four were returned and there is a committee that will narrow that down to two and then eventually narrow it down, paper screen it and then narrow, interview two and then bring back a proposal to us, the board, for one, for the talent screener. Training is in the process, this last month, we're training and evaluating administrators and certification training as well as, it's not part of the strategic plan, but the implementation of Tyler and the transition into Tyler seems to be moving along. It's still going to take about 12 to 18 months, but we are moving forward and that will be a great help to the district. I also have a report from Pro Act that I want to share with everyone and ads were placed in the Education Week, St. Louis Post-Dispatch, School Spring Online, Missoura Association of School Administrators, Illinois Association of School Administrators, Pro Act Search website and Pro Act Search blog. As of November 10th, Pro Act Search received applications from 49 candidates. The, I'm going to break down the statistics for you. There were 69 males that applied out of the 49, 69% and 24% of them were female. By race, there were 40.8% African Americans, 38.8% Caucasian, 8.2% Hispanics, 4.1 multiracial, 2% American Indian. Relevance of years of experience, from 0 to 5, it was 16.3%, from 5 to 10 years, it was 14.3%. From 10 to 15 years, it was 12.2%. 15 to 20 years, 14.3%. 20 to 25 years, 10.2%. And 25 to 30 percent, or 25 to 30 years, it's 22.5%. 10% being 30 years or over. Current geographical regions are, the Midwest was 42.9%, the West or Southwest was 18.4%, the East Coast was 16.3%, the South was 16.3%, outside continental U.S. was 2%. And the current, past ties to the Ferguson, Florissant School District, or to Missouri, yes, was 73.5% and no, was 20.4%. The next steps will be to continue recruiting additional candidates by the application deadline of December 15th. Screening of the candidates, including interviews, data, dashboards and other information. Presentation of the top eight to 12 candidates to the board by early January of 2015. Coordination of interviews as necessary, coordination of finalist interviews as necessary and coordination of candidate travel and scheduling of interviews as necessary. And the coordination of candidates, scheduling of interviews will be also for the entire community during our last round. And that's my report from Pro Act.
Thank you. Over the last few weeks, I've been attending as many meetings as possible to discuss on the superintendent search, but what's mostly on everybody's mind is the security procedures that we have in place or putting in place with the pending grand jury verdict. If you're all aware, I know the media's covered it a great deal, we had sent home with the students our emergency plan or management plan. You know, I can tell you, this is typical, we do it every year, we review it, we make adjustments, we send it out, but we really thought it was prudent to be ahead of it this year, to give everybody an idea of what we're looking for. Dr. Luru may cover a little bit more of this, but the message I've been sending to everybody is for, if you're a guardian of a child in the district, it's vital that the contact information is updated at the schools, that in case of any emergency, we will be using School Reach, which is our telephone system, sending out messages. We'll be posting out on Facebook, we'll be posting it out on the website. But for the contact list for the students to be picked up, if we went into shelter in place, which means they maintained at the school until somebody picks them up. So they must be on this approved list. So reach out to anybody who has students and please encourage them to contact their schools. I understand there's a form that must be completed. Honestly, I didn't know that, I just wrote a letter and we sent it to the school and then they said, hey, you need to fill out this form. So there is a form that must be completed in order for their child to be picked up from school. So thank you.
Good evening. There is, there has been quite a few questions that have been raised. We're trying to address them. Much of the questions have been, as many of you experienced, questions on timing of an announcement. And rumors have been rampant and so between concerns that parents have had as well as staff members, we're continuing to try to be as responsive as we can based on the information that we have available to us with a lot of the same uncertainties that you all are quite aware of. Our intent is to continue to be as obvious in what we're trying to do to meet the parents and student concerns that exist. And so those communication channels, you know, that is our goal. We'll continue to look for feedback. If there are opportunities for us to improve, please let us know because it is that, it is that important, that, as with everybody here on the board that is mentioned tonight, for us to all work together. One of the items that was mentioned was the breakfast with the clergy. Those conversations are continuing, they have been very fruitful. Relationships that we have developed, shouldn't say that we have necessarily developed, that others within the community have developed with us, have pursued us. An example is, and these are opportunities that we need to try and capitalize on, vision, needs of our students to do well in school. It's unfortunate that sometimes, you know, these things occur that are being experienced, but we have groups that are wanting, they recognize us, that they may not have taken those steps previously or maybe we didn't do a good enough job previously to reach out to seek them. And Crown Vision Centers and S.L.R. Vision Foundation helped provide a program called Kids' Vision for Life. They serve each year about half of our elementary schools to provide vision screenings. And this year, they did it off schedule and we, that occurred at a vision fest on November 5th here and there were approximately 200 students that received glasses and it was served, which is substantial. So we, that's just an example of some of the services that have found their way into the Ferguson, Florissant School District. And relationships require something more than just a day. It's timed. And you know, over the last year, year or two, we've had some opportunities to learn more about ourselves, things that we need to improve upon. Sometimes we might not like to hear the feedback, but, but it resonates. And so probably a good opportunity to lead into that section because I'm acting a little long too, sorry if I already have. Public comments. There has been feedback over the last year, year or two that, you know, typically we have comments on the agenda as well as a period at the end of the meeting for just general questions or concerns that publicly have. And we've had comments made, it's kind of hard for parents that have children to stay that late. And there might be the same kinds of issues that others may have that they don't get to hear or at least to find out how we've, you know, tried to resolve the questions or concerns. And these are real issues. If somebody feels strong enough to stand before a group and say to the board what's on their mind, others that may hear it, may not hear what we've done or maybe we even haven't had a chance to try and address it well enough. That's also a concern. So you've seen the comment cards, what, what we wanted to try to do is give the opportunity, move up the comments from the end of the meeting to earlier so people don't have to stay until maybe 10, 10:30 at night sometimes. It'll also give us a chance during the recess that we follow, to hopefully have staff members that can try and meet with whoever might have the question or concern. Last month, a question was raised about the patrols, not the patrols, but the crossing guards at some of our schools. We had questions raised after cuts from last year about, you know, that concern from some parents. And we looked at it, didn't take too much looking, I mean, it wasn't an easy decision to make the cut in the spring, but we felt it was necessary to at least try. And with the tax approval and with the comments that, you know, kind of eased into it, the questions and the review, we are in the process of putting those positions back because it was something that was said during the tax campaign that was safety. And so I don't know if the people that raised the question were here last month, but here's an example of it. We want to be able to make sure that we communicate that, or to them, that, you know, we hear and we're trying to be responsive. So with that, all of that said, give us a chance, we want to try and address questions or concerns because unfortunately, since they're not agenda items, some things that may be mentioned anyway, aren't agenda items. And since they're not agenda items, we can't speak to them here, but give us a chance, we'll try and chase it down and work together on it. That's okay. Okay?
Mr. Green, FFNA, you get the last word.
You and I will go home. Oh, no, sorry. Thanks, board. How's everybody doing tonight? How's everybody doing tonight? I don't have much to say, except that the Missouri NEA and FFNAA would like to thank everyone that came out and voted to defeat Amendment 3. It was a huge win for us. Because of that, we can now have collective bargaining again, and speaking of collective bargaining, it's that time of year, it's negotiations time. The FFNAA has started working on issues that we need to bring to negotiations, and we're looking forward to working with the FFSD. We are looking forward to another year of fair and open dialogue, where win-win is always a goal. Thank you very much.
The Board allocates this portion of the meeting to allow stakeholders the opportunity to comment on both agenda items and non-agenda items at the start of each board meeting. Prior to the public comment period, participants are asked to fill out a comment card with their name, address, phone number, email address, and topic to be addressed, and will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. Members of the audience who wish to speak to the Board are requested to speak from the podium, identify themselves, and keeping with District Policies 4054, 4059, and Personnel Law, should refrain, excuse me, should refrain from making negative comments that are personally identifiable. While the Board will not directly respond to speakers during the public comment period, well, it says here the Board President may clarify remarks at the end of the comment session, but I thought we were changing that.
Well, it's just to clarify if there's questions, but it's, you've got to be heard.
Yeah, right. All right. So, I know several people have requested to speak to the Board. If you'd like to make your way up to the podium, provide your name, address. You want me to call? Amelia Schultz.
I'm sorry, is there anything else I was supposed to identify myself? No. Okay, I'm, my question to the Board is about whether there is a policy, or if there have been discussions in place, assuming that when the verdict comes down, we end up missing school. I feel that if we miss much more school at all, the Board needs to, or I don't know if it's the Board or Dr. LaRue, needs to look into postponing midterm exams until after Christmas break. Because it is, we've already had a week and a half less of the semester, if we have much more than that, then really the kids aren't being tested on a full semester's worth of material, and I think there should be some consideration of that. So I don't know if that's in place, that's kind of the question, and what the reasoning is, if you are or are not.
My name is Joan Ferriks, and I'm at Number One St. Cardinal Discourse, and I'm inspired by all the people who won all the awards, I think that's wonderful. I, I'm here because I got my dander up over Proposition 3, I'll tell you, and I really support y'all. And so, it made me think a lot about you all and schools, and I've been here before mouthing off. This year, I think I watched too many Cardinal games, and I thought about the classroom, and I thought about how it's the spirit that you need in sports, in the classroom, and so how do you achieve this? Well, I thought if I were a teacher, what I would do would be, now who's missing in the classroom today? I'd ask the pupil, the children, who's missing? Joe Bowe, Joe Bowe's missing. Well, when he comes back, I want you all to welcome him back and say, we missed you, we're glad you're back. That's the first thing, to get the team together. And then I would say, I'm going to give you a piece of paper, there's a little quarter sheet, and today you write what you learned today to Joe Bowe, and when he comes back, he will not miss the class, because he will have all your comments on what you learned today. Now, when Joe Bowe comes back, we would have all these papers, and either he would read them out in class, or you would promote them up again, and maybe have an extra little discussion on it. So I think this little note would unite the classroom and the people, the teachers and the children, and, so you taught it once, they wrote it down once, and you're discussing it again. I want to tell you, if you say this three times, it is stuck in your brain. So I want to tell you, I would have all these little things going on, and especially this one, to unite the class. And, well, I have other things that I would say too. I have another pet peeve, do you want to hear it now, or should I come back? Well, my other pet peeve is, why do I have to take algebra? Does anybody here tell me? You know, you know. I'll tell you why. I hope you, I hope you understand this. What are you doing when you do algebra? You are, you're solving problems, that's what you're doing, you're solving problems. So what really are you doing? You're training your brain to solve problems. Do you think that this is what we need in our world today? Yes, absolutely. I have some, well, I'll just only tell you one, one problem that was solved. This man had a girlfriend across the lake, and he had to row his boat over and back, and over and back. But he liked this girl, so he rowed his boat over and back. Well, what do you think happened? He invented the motorboat. I can tell you, I've been a bookkeeper all my life, and I have solved problems when I didn't even think about them, because when you train your brain to be a problem solver, they can solve any kind of problem. You need to tell your children why they have to, why this is so important. Me and Matt are so, so, so terribly important. I can use, okay, I think.
Ms. Dunman? Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Board members of, my name is Eileen Dunman, excuse my voice. I am currently a guest teacher for Ferguson-Florissant School District. The issue I want to address is offering health insurance for subs. Many subs need it, myself included, and many others that I've talked to that work with me, and they are willing to pay for it. And another issue I wanted to talk about is SubFinder needs to be replaced with a better company called ASOP. I sub for two districts, and the other company's much better. I have looked down some things, personal issues that I've had with SubFinder, and it's ridiculous. I had a secretary call me, I had canceled a job, and the next day, I had the secretary at Duchesne call me, saying that, why wasn't I there? And I explained that I canceled the night before. I said, didn't they replace? She, she says, no. So SubFinder never put it back in the system. That is just one of many, many issues I've had with them. And I think that's it. And I did have the pleasure of working under Dr. Thurman for six years.
Hi.
Just as a reminder, avoid using personally identifiable information in your remarks. Okay, thank you.
I have had the pleasure of talking with some of you regarding some of the issues that have been going on at one of the high schools this year, not limited to money being lost and unaccounted for, parents' money that has been paid, racial comments and slurs during a very tense time in our community, the dismissal, my son was dismissed from a football team with no explanation after being in the program, and it led up to the attempt of physical assault from a teacher to a parent. I have brought this in front of some of you, but not all of you, and I come to you for support. I don't know where to turn. Ms. Thurman spoke earlier on the importance of discipline in our schools. We said about how important sports activities are, we have members of sporting events drinking at school-sponsored events with absolutely no punishment being set forth, we have failing students being swept under the rug so that they can take part in a sport, and it's unacceptable for a district that hangs on by a mere thread. We have to live here, we have to send our kids to these schools, and we deserve to feel like they're safe, secure, and being led down the path of people we want to lead our future. I have, I would, my reason for being here is to request a personal meeting with the Board. I have documentation on all of the events, I have printouts and handouts and copies, and I'd really like to have a meeting with the Board and administrative administration so I can get some support in getting this fixed. I stand alone, so I'm working alone, and I don't know where else to turn. I've gone as high as I can possibly go. Thank you.
Do you have someone to lead with us now?
I do. Thank you very much.
I just come to say thanks, there's a whole bunch of people in this room I want to thank. Kevin came over after we were at the clergy meeting, I asked Kevin to come and give me a little bit more detail. He came over to our prayer breakfast and reminded me about the walk to Amys, did our hearts not burn? It was just wonderful. He acquired quite a few more people there that work in the clergy that want to do something for us, and that was the whole idea about the prayer breakfast. I told everybody, this is not your regular fundraising, this is a prayer breakfast. People were up saying, what can we do? What can we do? I went to a meeting at the RAC, 300 people were there, they were there to talk about what to do about Ferguson. I was the only one there for Ferguson. I asked for a show of hands, how many of you are from Ferguson? I was the only one standing. So inside of our own community, what can we do? And they answered the charge. So now Kevin is an honorary member of the Ferguson Administrative Alliance, get my in. Out of that prayer breakfast, we also acquired eight volunteers who right away signed up, I don't know if Carl or Janik is here, but you'll be hearing from them real soon. So they signed up to do Oasis, signed up to be math tutors, and anything else that you might want to have. I wanted to really say thank you to Jabeau, to Scott, to Brown, all of you guys that come by, Schrader, and see what they're doing over at Walnut Grove, what they're doing at Duchesne. We were there tonight, and I'm telling you, one of the girls, one of the guys from Boeing came in, he stood a presentation for them, and he thought there was no one there. There were 29 people in the room. We had them on FaceTime on the iPhone, talking across the world. Same thing over at Walnut Grove last Thursday. One of the ladies walked in, she couldn't see anybody in the room, when she walked in, she stopped, she said, I thought there was no one in the room. Room full of people. To what you're talking about, discipline, we're having kids now that understand about respecting each other for cultural reasons. I told, I think it was Scott last week, kids were able to partner up on their own. My back was still warm, when I turned around, it was black, white, black, white, black, white, black, white. This racism business is a learned behavior. If you let children do it, guess what, we don't have all of that. So I just appreciate all of you that are giving these people support. I call them people, they're my people, I love them. I am here to ask for some support. I need for the next nine days to have a building open, I'm choosing Duchesne, because we're going to competition, and we're going to win. They are already, the values, they got that down pat. One of the guys from Express Group tonight said, what is that sound, good job, good job, they ought to do that when they win. I said, oh, they already won. Because you know what they've won? Because these kids have IEPs, these kids have a lot of issues, but you wouldn't be able to tell it after just from the time. And we're having courageous conversation. I talked to Dr. Eric, and I said, hey, I need to have courageous conversation, you got any, got a problem with that? He said, no problem at all. I said, it's going to be about race for real. And these kids are learning that it's up to you. So I need on Saturday this week, Duchesne to be open from 9:30 to 3 o'clock. I got to tell you, it's your turn, I need you there. Thank you.
Thank you to everybody who spoke before the Board, appreciate that. Declaration of candidacy, three-year terms for Ferguson-Florissant School Board members, Mr. Paul Schrader and Mr. Brian Scott Gilbert, expire in April 2015. Declarations of candidacy may be picked up in the office of the superintendent at 1005 Barford Drive, Florissant, Missouri, from 7:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on days the district is open. Under Missouri law, the first day to file as a candidate is Tuesday, December the 16th, 2014. Filing closes at 5:00 p.m. on Tuesday, January 20th, 2015. School district offices will be closed Monday, December the 22nd, 2014, through Friday, January 2nd, 2015. The annual election for the Board of Education is Tuesday, April the 7th, 2014. A person who wishes to file for candidacy for the Board of Education must be a citizen of the United States, at least 24 years old, a resident taxpayer of the school district, a resident of the state of Missouri for at least one year. In addition, the candidate must follow these procedures, file a declaration of candidacy, line up for filing pursuant to District Policy 4013. So at this time, we're going to take a brief recess for 10 minutes, and then we'll reconvene. Mr. Engle and Ms. Morris. Mr. Ebert and Ms. Morris. All right, thank you. All right, consent agenda.
I'd like to table 12D, 24 alarm DVR.
All in favor of tabling item 12D, which is the alarm 24 DVR purchase? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Hearing none, we pull item D, 12D. All right, Ms. Morris, if you would be so kind to read the dispersments once.
Averil, teacher and non-teacher, eleven million, three hundred and three thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars and ten cents. Operational dispersments, one million, two hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and one dollars and nine cents. For a grand total of twelve million, five hundred and seven thousand, seven thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars and eighteen cents.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Been moved in second. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Hearing none, ayes had it. All right, we move into building level progress. Dr. Bland.
Good evening. At this time, I would ask Mr. Robert Ricker, Superintendent from Commons Lane Elementary and Primary, if he will share unique programs from his school that contribute to the overall success of Commons Lane.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much. I'm the principal at Commons Lane Elementary. It's my third year at Commons Lane, have the privilege of serving the staff and students and parents there. But before I get started, I want to recognize three teachers that are here with us this evening. I have second grade teacher, Ms. Kristen Bowley, second grade teacher, Mark Smith, fourth grade teacher, Mary Lee Nado. Most of my teachers were at a reading night.
Could they stand up?
Yeah, absolutely. This is the second event for these three. Last night, we had a reading night that had over eighty-eight families and over two hundred people attend, so they should be committed for organizing that event, very well attended. Just one of the many things that we're going to kind of talk about in the presentation. So, this is very succinct, and Commons Lane for this year, we are focusing on results. And these are the four items that we've been focusing on for this year. Years Plus is a growth program for math and reading. Science, obviously, it was our biggest area for growth according to our IMSA five points, PBIS, Positive Behavior Support, and our community engagement. The picture there is of a science experiment that took place right before Halloween. How many rubber bands would it take to smash pumpkin? Two-hundred and forty-two. Years Plus is a program that we kind of started last year with our reading vision, and we kind of carried over with math. We expect, led by the teachers, that each student that enters in Commons Lane, and they're there for a year, they should get at least a Years Plus growth regardless of where they're at. Above, above the standard or below the standard, they always get a Years Plus. As you can see, a lot of the teachers made more than a Years Plus growth, and some of them made almost two Years Plus growth. So, that's very great. It's a strength that we're focused on. We focused with guided reading, we're working again on writing, and we're obviously focusing on math. We did have some teachers that fell a little bit below the Years growth, but that's continued work. A lot of influx of students, but that's ever-changing, and we're always trying to hone our craft. Science is a process. It's a big focus for us this year. It was our largest growth point for our IMSA five points. This year, we've been lucky enough to work with Little Creek and Eric Hadley in getting STEM teachers. We have STEM teachers that are going through the STEM program, one in grades three, four, five, and six. Also, the teachers have worked together, and they're utilizing those half-day PE days in the morning for conducting science experiments with their class, having that focus on science all the way down to kindergarten, focusing on the scientific process, collecting data, whether it's just in kindergarten, charting on, was it a cloudy day or a sunny day, all the way up to sixth grade made some very interesting water slide experiments out of rolls of paper and tape, which was a STEM activity. Then, science and the guided reading groups, really trying to incorporate the content into literacy, using our guided book room that we purchased through Title I funds last year, and implementing science in the reading of every student every day. That's a goal. We strive for that, and we continue to work on that process. Positive Behavior Intervention Support, last year, we were a bronze award winner. One great thing that's been going on at Commons Lane, prior to becoming, as well as what the teachers have been working on, the last, last year, every month, eighty percent of our students met the universals every single month. So, that is really huge, laying that foundation, laying that groundwork, working on our Commons Lane four Bs, being positive, being respectful, responsible, safe, and kind, whether that's in a classroom, whether that's in a cafeteria, the hallway, at a recess, and hopefully carrying over to their daily lives outside of school as well. So, teachers should be commended. We've worked on our Tier Two interventions of having a Cardinal Club where we check in and check out with the different adults, and we are honing our Tier Three intervention support, hopefully, starting the second semester. Parent-teacher organization, we have monthly events every month. This is a picture of our event that we had in October, which was our Wellness Night and Health Fair. A lot of our PE staff helped with that. We also had the smoothie bike, that's what the students are using to make a smoothie. Our Reading Carnival, I just kind of spoke about in the introduction, and also our Science Night, making sure that every classroom goes through a science fair project because that is a major emphasis for our IMSA five points to help support the growth and getting accreditation for the district. So, that's Commons Lane in a snapshot. Any questions that you might have, any comments?
Thank you, Green Professor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ricker, and thank you to his teachers who came out this evening to support Mr. Ricker and his presentation. At this time, Ms. Oglesby will come up, and she is the principal at Combs.
Good evening.
Good evening.
At Combs, we have some new initiatives in place this year. Thank you. We have workshop model teaching that's being implemented across the curriculum in writing, reading, and math, and in some science classes. And with this particular model, teachers are teaching a ten-minute mini lesson on a particular skill, and then moving right into small group instruction. And we have mathematics in Common Core, that's our focus, and we are incorporating more problem solving into math instruction to prepare students for Common Core. And service to the community, sixth graders are participating in service projects throughout the year. Workshop model teaching, some of the benefits are that teachers are able to differentiate their instruction more often for all learners. There are frequent formative assessments administered, so teachers can do a quick check to determine if students are mastering the skill. There's time to reinforce subject matter in various ways, and the small groups that teachers work with have a common focus, and also the strategies that are used help to support them on the level in which they are learning. And there's more intensive instruction for those students that are struggling. In that particular picture, you could see Mrs. Whitaker, second grade teacher, and she's working with students on solving number sentences that include three add-ins, and if you can look into the picture, the other students are working on the same skill, they're working with a partner at their groups. Here's a picture of Katie Mills, she's a kindergarten teacher, and she's working with students on utilizing a tin frame and Play-Doh to count out the spaces and recognize numbers up to ten. This is Mrs. Hobbs, first grade teacher, and she's working with a group of students on recognizing their numbers and solving number sentences, subtraction sentences. Preparing students for Common Core, this year, we're committed to providing students with sample released items from the Smarter Balance website in actually grades two through six. The second grade teachers got word of it, and they said, "We want to get on board and make sure students are prepared when they get to third grade as well." And this provides more opportunities for students to just focus on problem solving. I'm seeing that a lot as I go into math classes, and I just think it's great because in order to be successful for Common Core and increase our math scores, students have to be able to problem solve. And this particular picture, you see students in sixth grade, they are working, we had a cleanup Combs Day, and they're working on the landscaping in the building, or around the building, and it helps to develop a sense of pride in their school and community, which we hope will lead to intrinsically motivating them to perform well in school. This particular picture is Mrs. Alfred, a sixth grade teacher, and she's working with a student, they are pulling weeds in front of the building. When they finished, the building looked awesome. And here, they are at Little Creek, they did the same thing as well, and they were planting trees, and it was just a great day, and they helped to make the facility look better. Do we have any Combs teachers here? Mrs. Rodd, can you stand? Music teacher, thank you so much. Students and teachers are working very hard at Combs, and I couldn't be more proud to serve as principal. Thank you.
That concludes our presentations for this evening, and again, I'd like to thank Mr. Ricker, his staff, and Ms. Oglesby and her staff. So, again, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Dr. Bland. Dr. Diggs, Comprehensive School Improvement Program.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm back again with our CSEP. I would just like to thank the stakeholders that attended many meetings to help us to come to the point that we are today to present a CSEP to the board. We had teachers, administrators, parents, everyone having a part in this task, the CSEP, which is a requirement from our Missouri School Department. And the charge was to take a one-hundred-page document and reduce it down to ten, and we made that call, I believe, by having eighteen pages out of the one-hundred, and really, a page is just titles. So, I think that we did a fine job, the committee worked very hard on it, and I'm bringing it to the board again for your approval to move it from being a stamp draft document to being an actual working document that we can carry forth in our schools to improve student achievement.
I move to approve the comprehensive school program.
It's been moved by Ms. Hogshead, seconded by Mr. Ebert. All in favor of accepting the comprehensive school improvement program? Oh, I'm sorry, I was just trying to move the meeting along, Mr. Morris. All right, discussion. Do we have any discussion on the CSEP? It's an amazing amount of work. On the eighteen, is that like five-nine?
I'd read it then.
You know, you can actually read it too, it's not that small.
So, if you're down to, they wanted you down to ten, and you're down to eighteen, are they going to extend?
Well, if you take out the titles, you know, the committee members, and you take out the graphs, I think we will be at ten. So, they approved, they approved the document, and asked us to send it back to our board. So, they did give us their presence to bring it forward tonight.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, motion's been made in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Hearing none, ayes had it. All right, Dr. Diggs, Moley.
I would like to read the paragraph that I had prepared for the board agenda item for Moley, and it states that over twenty-six Ferguson Foreston School District administrators have participated in the National Institute for School Leadership, which is NISSL. NISSL provides an eighteen-month rigorous training in educational best practices, targeted programs for high priority challenges, and the capacity building within our schools. We are now in cadre three. So, we've gone through cadre one with about twelve faculty members, cadre two with about seven, and now we're into cadre three. The cadre three participants are Crystal Eisen, Principal of Central, Adrian McLinton, Principal of Airport, Sean George, Principal of Griffith, Chalata Williams, Principal of Berkeley Middle, Steve Waller, Principal of Mcclair South Berkeley, Eric Halli, Science Coordinator, Donna Fraser, Mcclair North High School Assistant Principal, Jane Crawford, Principal of Mcclair High, Melinda Ice, Principal of Robinwood, Mark Willough, Principal of Mark Twain Student Support, Matt Heinzke, Principal of Bermuda, and Bo Ricker, Principal of Commons Lane. So, we are really getting all of our principals and our administrators involved in this outstanding program. We, the directors have gone through it, Nicole Wysel, myself, and now Adrian Bland is finishing up, so we are all involved in this process, and it's been just an awesome opportunity for us to, as we lead our schools. The program requires completion of all of the sessions, and one must make up a session if they miss that, or one or two sessions before they are awarded their certificate, and they must also complete an actual learning project to be eligible for completion.
I move to approve Moley.
Second. Motion's been made in second, discussion?
How many more of our administrators have to go through, how many more cadres to get?
If you have them all, is it just one or two elementary?
Omen and Wedgewood, so two administrators.
Now, I don't know, the comment I'd like to make other than the questions, I don't know how much the public understands how the whole job of teacher and principal is changing very, very rapidly. And the district is willing to invest the money in our people, because our people is what makes the schools. And I think it's really important that we recognize that we're investing in our people, and our people are going to make things better for our kids. And our people have to step up to the plate, just by saying they're willing to do this, eighteen months of training, that's a big deal.
In addition.
In addition, and their regular job, you know, so there's a lot of commitment on both sides here, and I just want to commend all of our people that are making this happen, you and all of our principals that are going through this, because that's the only way we're really going to get the outstanding results we're looking for, is everybody's got to work harder and work smarter, and I appreciate your moving along this road.
Thank you. I'd like to share, hey, Larry, what I'm, next week on Wednesday and Thursday, I have been selected to be a facilitator of ten, the NISSL, the unit is titled, Principal as Ethical Leader, so I will spend two days facilitating that program in another district.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Hearing none, ayes had it. Dr. McMillan, Coordinator of Parent and Community Engagement Position.
Yes, sir. The Human Resources Department is requesting this evening that an eight-month stipend be approved for a new position of Coordinator of Parent and Community Engagement. This stipend is based upon an anticipated four-hundred hours of work at a rate of twenty dollars per hour. We have attached to the, to the motion this evening, a draft job description for the position. We anticipate that the hours of work will be weekends and evenings, and they'll be outside of the regular contracted times. And I know that we have Dr. Diggs and Dr. Bland, who can speak to any questions the board may have regarding that items.
I move to approve the Parent and Community Engagement.
Sergeant, motion's been made in second, discussion?
So, tell us in a nutshell, what this is going to do, what are your expectations?
Our expectations are to fill a gap that we have. We have parent liaisons that are in place, that are in need of a person to help lead that group of individuals to enhance what our schools are needing to bring more community involvement into the schools on a daily basis. We did have a person that was working in that area, helping to, for example, Michael Nguyen was brought to the district, I don't know if you all remember, that individual national author brought in, talked to parents about what needs to take place for their students to be successful, meeting with community leaders, stakeholders, engaging the community in schools, being that liaison person, that facilitator to help the logistics of the parent liaisons. They right now, they don't have a person that's meeting with them on a regular basis, so in a nutshell, that person will lead the parent liaisons to fill that gap.
Will this be a posted position?
Yes.
Where are you going to post it at?
On our website. Are we post all of our positions?
Is it internal or internal and external?
That was my question, because you set up with talking about weekends and so forth, there could be an internal person, but doesn't have to be.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none?
I missed it. I read this people tonight, but what are the requirements for this person in terms of educational status? Is it? What's required?
Page two, isn't it?
Minimum qualifications. It's right below the checkoff list for Director of Community and Parent Engagement. Job summary purpose, and then minimum qualifications.
Have a master's degree in education administration.
A master's. Why is it that you set that expectation so high with a master's degree for a community engagement?
I'm sorry, this person should have a bachelor's degree and a teacher's certification, because he'll be working in the school environment.
So bachelor's degree.
It's not the information was given, it's in the form.
Yeah, that's what he's telling us, that he made a mistake with that. Clarifying it, so instead of a master's degree, he's saying it's a bachelor's degree, but with a teacher's certification.
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Hearing none, ayes had it. All right, Mr. McMillan, Leadership Support Liaison. I'm sorry.
No, because we're voting on the position.
Position, decision.
Not protected.
Right.
This evening, we're requesting the authorization of a new position, a Leadership Support Liaison position. This would be an administrative position that would mentor and assist elementary buildings and principals with low APR totals from last year. We would anticipate this position working eight hours per week at a rate of $57.95 per hour. This is the same rate of pay as an elementary substitute principal. And we've attached the job description for your overview.
I move that we accept the Leadership Support Liaison.
Okay. Votes been made in second, discussion, questions?
My point is, again, that I think this is very smart, that we're putting extra effort where it's needed.
Any other discussions, comments? I know this is something that we've been asking for, for a while, especially with Dr. Bland overseeing 17 elementary schools, so this will be an asset for her, or feed in the classrooms or in the hallways, so.
Do you have an approximate number of how many?
I have no these positions.
Yeah. To do all of the schools with a low APRI.
This is where we want to get.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the Leadership Support Liaison, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Hearing none, ayes had it. All right, we're going to talk about salt. Mr. O'Neil.
Good evening, board members, I appreciate your time tonight. We are going to talk a little about salt storage and equipment storage. On the agenda is an item that's a part of a larger initiative. We prepared drawings and specification for salt storage structure and an equipment storage structure as a alternate. The bids were for a 60 by 40 salt storage structure and an equipment storage structure of the same size as a alternate. This is the last part of a larger plan for, that our staff provide all snow and ice removal services for the entire district without using contractors. Over the past year, we have replaced vans that were needed to be replaced with utility trucks so they could use for snow plowing. We purchased additional snow plows, blades, and salt spreaders as well. These changes and purchases have provided nine additional snow plowing trucks, including snow removal equipment. We now have 19 snow removal vehicles and equipment. Our fleet in the past was 10 trucks and drivers, with contract providing additional eight trucks and drivers. The final piece is to build the salt storage to house our salt supply. With this, we won't pay for storage or handling, and we'll have 24-hour access to our salt supply, which we don't have now. We'll pay the same price for the salt, because we've already arranged to be part of the St. Louis County Salt Cooperative, which involves numerous municipalities and other government entities, and they get the salt at half price or less. The return on this investment, after we build this storage shelter, if we build this, is approximately eight to nine years at the current rate for the handling of salt and the storage. However, if you factor in the annual increase of the handling fee, our return's approximately seven years. We'll realize the savings that are operating a budget for the handling fees, the storage fees, and the contractor's fees for snow removal and the additional salt at two times the cost that we used to get from our contractor. Due to the purchase of additional equipment, we are requesting to build an equipment storage facility as well, along with the salt storage, to store the equipment so it will last longer, our blade and so forth will have to sit outside otherwise, and we're concerned about deterioration and rusting. If we build it now, we save approximately $73,000, then, so by building at the same time, the one structure is about $165,000 by itself, and as you can see, the amount we're requesting tonight is about $73,000 more to have the additional storage. We budgeted $200,000 for these two structures, and as you can see, we're asking for 247, so you may be wondering how you're going to pay for that. We came along low budget on the other stove equipment that we purchased here, the trucks, the plows, the blades, and the spreaders, by $56,000, which would give us the total budget of $256,000, which, of course, we're asking for less. We're requesting that the contract be awarded to low bidder, Waller Corporation, the amount of $247,000, which includes both structures. Waller Corporation is a union company and uses all union subcontractors, which I think means part of our concern is about reaching $250,000 or more. Aside from the snow removal, I did want to take this opportunity to talk to the board a little bit about how we've been using our own staff instead of contractors. That was the goal of mine when I came here, and I believe the boards as well. We worked over the past two years to hire professional staff that are licensed and certified in their field. We've hired two licensed plumbers, two licensed electricians. Our AV staff has been working in-house rather than contracting. Most of them are already certified technicians, and we've sent them to additional training and certification. We are fortunate to have some of my guys here tonight, I don't want to get to introduce people like principals do, but these four people that are here tonight were instrumental in some of these things and saving us a large sum of money by doing work in-house and being willing to do that. We have Mike Kirchhoff, who's our assistant supervisor over the grounds crew, will be responsible for the snow removal. Can you stand up, please? That's Mike Kirchhoff. Mike Seavers, who's one of the licensed plumbers, the first one we hired. Mike takes on a lot of additional tasks and volunteers to do things instead of contractors, has been a big help. And then Matt Fruffaro and Greg Pollack are both our HVAC techs, and they both, they've also both been very, very instrumental in us doing our in-house. They've gone to extra training, Matt has actually learned the Dyken system and the train system, and gone to excavating classes and saved us money in those areas every time we needed repairs, instead of having to call in a company, they've been able to do that. And our grounds crew, besides the snow plowing that they're going to be taking on this year, they've also been able to do more landscaping and install irrigation systems with help of the plumbers and the HVAC crew. So everybody's working together to save us money and to do things in-house, which in turn saves us in our operating fund. And with your gracious help of giving us the bond funds to buy equipment like bobcats and backhoes, which we bought this past year, and this snow plowing equipment, some HVAC equipment and tools, and AV equipment and tools, our AV staff also has taken on more in-house jobs, instead of calling in technicians to install sound systems and video systems and so forth. So everybody's pitched in to make this in-house and saving money. This past week alone, using our own excavator, we saved over $20,000 on four different projects. Over this past two years, we've saved close to $350,000 in contracting fees by using our own staff, so I'm really proud of it. Tonight, I'm going to ask for the approval of $247,000 for a salt storage facility and a equipment storage facility.
I move we build a salt storage and equipment building.
Second. Votes been made in seconded, discussion? Terry, where are these going to be at?
I'm sorry, I shouldn't mention that. They're going to be at the plant, our facilities department, I think most of you know where that is, on Minter Industrial Drive, be directly behind my office, on the backside of our building, they won't be able, they won't be visible from the street. We do have a gate entrance there already, so we won't have to be at any gates or anything to get access to the salt.
Well, they, how soon till we get this built?
Pretty quickly, they're actually, they're going to come tonight so they can start getting the asphalt and things ordered to get underway. They're hoping to have it done before the weather turns on us. If not, it might have to be early spring.
Okay. So the completion would be that, Terry?
It'd be early spring, the worst-case scenario, yeah.
What's the, you say we're going to recoup this investment in about seven years, is what you said? What's the life of this investment in terms of?
Well, that's one of the things, I think with our equipment, if we can house it, as we hope to do with this, with this project, it'll last a lot longer. Blades and spreaders can last a long time, 15, 18 years. Our vehicles, we generally put a 10-year life on vehicles. We've been able to extend that out over the past few years to keep our vehicles longer. They're better maintained, and hopefully we'll be able to store them better, so we plan our vehicles lasting more than 10 years.
I just want to say that I'm so happy to have Terry on our staff. He has done a marvelous job with the plant since he arrived, and has made great changes in, and leadership that he's shown has just been remarkable, and I want to say thank you for that.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the salt storage facility and equipment storage? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Hearing none, go build. Thank you. All right, Laura.
Same salt here.
All right, we're talking about change in dispersment processes in finance.
Good evening, Laura. I wanted to request a change in the process in the way we handle our dispersments. Currently, our process is, we do run weekly dispersments every week. We pay utilities, because if we have a very short window and we have to pay fines if we don't pay them quickly. We also pay our student activity, anything that comes out of our student activity funds are run once a week. We pay reimbursements to our employees once a week, and also like registrations, things like that that have a deadline, we pay those weekly. The rest of the dispersments are paid, we pay them once a month. We run the dispersments actually the week before the board meeting in order to get all the paperwork to Margie, and then after the day of the board meeting, then we release all those checks. And this has been an ongoing issue with vendors for years, because a lot of times there could be between six, if you don't get the paperwork in time, depending on when the work is done, they may not be paid in a month's time, it might be six to eight weeks before their payment. But that's not the reason I'm coming to you tonight. With the new system, which is so wonderful, we're changing, we've changed the whole way that we do our process. In the past, accounts payable would key in all the activities as they came in, and they would release them in a batch. Now we are doing it a different way with our receiving. All items are received at the maintenance department, and once it's received, it sets them up for pay. So in order to do a weekly dispersment, my staff has to go in and look at each item and back it out of the batch, and so that it doesn't go in until the board meeting. So we're requesting a change in the process. It's not a change in them, all dispersments, all payrolls have to be approved by the board, but we're, and so that will not change. All dispersments would still come to the board, but the change in process that I'm requesting is that every Friday, we send you the check register of all the checks that we ran that week, and then you can review them, and you would have two business days. If you didn't get them until Monday, we would wait until you had two business days to look at them. And then if you didn't have any reason to pull those checks, then we would just go ahead and release them. So we would just work on exception. If you had a question, we would call, we could call and pull that check. Then all of those dispersments, all those check registers would still come to you at the end of the month, and you would still approve them like you are now. So basically, you would get to see the checks, you're actually getting a little bit more oversight, because you're seeing the checks each week as they're being run, as opposed to at the end of the month. A lot of times, a lot of those checks have already went out, and we can't do anything about it anyway. So it's not a change of procedure or in policy, but we're just asking for a change of procedure to be able to release the checks on a weekly basis. It would make my staff's job a lot easier, because right now, they're spending a lot of time picking out dispersments, and it would actually make our vendors a lot happier, too. I just had an example this week of something missed a board, more board meeting, and they didn't get their payment, and they've cut us off, and they won't give us our materials until they get their check, and they're waiting for the check to go out tomorrow. So that's just one of the many examples.
I move we change in dispersment process and finance.
Second. Votes been made in seconded? She got it.
So you're going to send us the checks that you want to send out that week, but we won't approve them until the end of the month?
Right. At the regular board meeting. So you'll still be approving all the payments. We currently release them now, a lot of them on the activities, they're not, they're going out before they're approved right now as it is, and you're not seeing that. So actually, you're getting a little bit more, you're going to be able to see those that are going out, and if you had a question on them, if you were wondering why we were doing a certain fundraiser, or, you know, paying somebody's mileage or whatever, we could pull it at that time and address it at that time, as opposed to at the end of the month. A lot of other school districts do it this way, we're kind of behind the time on that, but the system's kind of forcing us to do it, to change our procedure.
So there's no legal problems?
No. As long as it's all approved at the board meeting, which we would, we would still continue to send you the full check register, too, so that you could, you could ensure at the end of the month.
Approval is not the policy, because this is the board information.
So if you're wondering why, I'm sorry, if you're, well, I'm just asking if we could just change the procedure, basically. When you get that check register, if you look at it, if you see anything that you want to pull at that time, call me, you know, I'm sorry. Yeah, and that you, you would might have wondered why you were starting to get those check registers, and so we would just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Yes, makes good sense, anything that adds less work for our people. We're asking a lot more of everybody, so we can do something that's less, that's a great deal.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. All right, adjourn to executive session. Hearing no other business?
I move, Roger, into executive session.